Hello.
I'm here. Is that you, Shalini?
Hi Barry, yes, it's me.
Okay. I spoke up earlier and anybody could hear me.
Yeah.
That's good, feel safe. Hey Barry, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. All right, we can get ready to go whenever you would like.
All right.
Hey, good evening.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good, thank you. Been back at work for almost a month.
Yeah, that's good. How's the baby doing?
Very well, thank you. Yeah, my husband's on maternity leave right now, so still, still at home.
That's good.
That's pretty convenient. Do you need to make an announcement before we start, Jessica?
I do, I need to read, uh, read the remote meeting items, so I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner, staff, and meeting participants, thank you for joining us this evening for the March 11th, 2021, Monteserino Better Streets Commission. Before the meeting is called to order, I'd like to point out a few things to assist commission members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Commissioners, please keep your microphones muted until you wish to speak. You have a hot mic. For this commission meeting, we are using Zoom to host the meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please use the raised hand if you'd like to be recognized and able to speak to the commission by the chairperson. Comments in the chat feature will not be part of the public record. For public, for the public to comment under oral communication on any agenda item, in addition to using the raised hand feature, emails can be sent to the city engineer, limited to 350 words, and they'll be read into the record. This limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raised hand option to comment. Participation from a telephone will allow for listening only and does not allow for any feedback. And finally, because we are not all in the same room, all votes for this meeting must be taken by roll call. I can't hear you Barry.
Thank you, I'm muted. Uh, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:03, and can you go ahead and do the roll call, Jessica?
Sure. Commissioner Elves? I believe you're on mute. Still can't hear you, but I do visibly see that you're here. Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner A. Saxina?
Here.
Commissioner S. Saxina?
Yeah.
Chair Chaffin?
Here.
Everyone is in attendance this evening.
Okay. So, orders of the day? Do we have any orders of the day?
I did have two announcements. Uh, one is that now we have iPads available for all the commissioners. You all should have received an email from Dave about that. Um, you can pick them up when we are open, which is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, between 12:00 to noon. Or we can arrange for, um, the city manager is volunteered to deliver them to your doorstep if you would rather. Also, there are commissioner handbooks, I believe you received digitally, but I also have hard copies here at City Hall. If anyone would like to take a hard copy home of the commissioner handbook, and those are my two announcements.
And can we stop by anytime during those opening hours?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I actually didn't know there was a digital version. But I'm getting some terrible feedback. Does anybody else hear that?
Feedback too.
Yeah, me too.
Do you think it's caused by me? Oh, it just ended.
It did.
No, it just ended, Barry. I think you're good.
Okay. I didn't, was a electronic version of that handbook sent out? I didn't.
I didn't get it.
Yeah.
No, I didn't get it.
Okay, I will send that to you all after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And you said Monday, Wednesday, Friday between noon and two? I'm sorry.
10:00 AM and noon.
10:00 AM. Okay, thank you so much, Jessica.
All right. Would you like to introduce the new, uh, commissioner?
Sure. Um, so we just have one new commissioner is Ms. Filippa Elves. Um, I believe she was sworn in while I was out on maternity leave by Michelle Radcliffe, our city clerk. If you have not gotten the chance to meet Michelle, oh no, Michelle was at your last meeting, so you've all had the chance to meet Michelle. Longtime resident of Monteserino, and hopefully we can get your, um, microphone to work this evening. Filippa, are you able to unmute yourself?
In the lower left-hand corner, you might see a mute, where it says mute. Try clicking that. Okay. I guess we should go on. Hopefully at our next meeting, you'll, uh, be able to tell us a couple of words about yourself, because we really love to meet you and welcome aboard. But unfortunately, none of us can hear you, so we're gonna move on. Do we have any oral communications?
Uh, we do not, but we do need to do the election of the chair and vice chair.
Oops, oops, okay, I missed that. Sorry about that. How should we proceed?
Um, so typically you do them individually, the chair and then the vice chair. Um, you ask for nominations. Um, you only need one nomination, and then someone can do a motion and second the motion and a vote.
Now, would anybody like to make a nomination?
Unmute. Can I make a nomination that Barry remain as chair, or does it have to change?
It does not need to change.
I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to run again, or do it again, uh, but if somebody else would like a turn, that's fine with me. Any other, do we have any other nominations? By the way, Filippa, you unmute, yeah, when you unmute, that's when we get the feedback. I just noticed that. So unfortunately, I think you need to stay muted till we can address that issue. Any other nominations? Shall we, uh, I guess, um, Shalani seconded the nomination, so we just, so do we just go ahead and go with that and take a vote?
Sure, sounds good. So I got Doreen for the nomination, Shalini for the second. So we'll do a roll call vote. Filippa, if you could maybe just raise your hand, because I can't see you. If you, or thumbs up or thumbs down, if you, uh, yea or nay. Um, so Commissioner Elves, this is for, uh, Chair Chaffin to stay the chair for the coming year. Commissioner Elves? Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner A. Saxina?
Yeah.
Commissioner S. Saxina?
Yes.
Chair Chaffin?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, Barry is the chair for 2021.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for having confidence in me. Would, uh, do we have any nominations for vice chair? I would, I would nominate, nominate Doreen, um, if she'll accept that.
I, I will accept unless someone would like to step into the role.
Does anybody want to second that nomination?
Second.
Thank you Nancy. If there's no other, no other nominations, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Commissioner Elves? I know you're still muted, I'm sorry. Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner A. Saxina? Commissioner S. Saxina?
Yes.
Chair Chaffin?
Yes.
All right, we got a chair and a vice chair for 2021.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody who would like to speak, uh, at the meeting today?
Nope, we do not have anyone else logged in right now.
Okay, and I haven't heard, uh, about written communications. Has any come in recently?
I have not received any.
Okay, next is the minutes from the last meeting, which, um, were not very detailed, but I think they were accurate. Would anybody like to, uh, make a motion that we approve those minutes as written, or would anybody like to change them?
I, I don't think anything needs to be changed. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 10th meeting.
Great, thank you. Could we have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you. That was Nancy. All right, and I believe you required to take a roll call vote on that, Jessica?
Indeed. Commissioner Elves? Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner A. Saxina?
Yes.
Commissioner S. Saxina?
Yes.
Chair Chaffin?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Next is unfinished business, Bruce Avenue. So I guess the first thing to do is just get caught up on where we are. Hopefully, you've had a chance to get caught up, Jessica, who I doubt that very much has happened in your absence anyways. Can you tell us where you think we are?
Yeah. So I did have a chance to listen to the last meeting and the suggestions that Doreen and Joanne put out there, and I also, um, saw that you all voted to recommend to the council to fund a preliminary design. And so I, in the past couple of weeks, have been reaching out to design engineer consultants. I've gotten a few, um, quotes back to do a design for the safety improvements, but then also for some street repairs as well, because that makes sense to do those together. So that's where we are on that. As far as the speed bumps go, I believe Steve, um, might have said that that was kind of a done deal. It is not. Um, the community vote is out right now. I'm expecting, it closes next Friday. So they, uh, notice, or a vote was sent out to all 25 properties on that segment of Bruce Avenue, either for them to support or oppose the speed bumps. Um, I've received 17 back, and so they need 17 yeses to, for the temporary speed bumps to go in. So it's not quite to 17 yeses, but I've received 17 responses. I also sent out, um, second notices on Monday to those properties that hadn't responded. So we're still waiting on those to come back to see if we'll do temporary speed bumps.
Is it appropriate for you to share with us how the voting has gone so far?
Um, it's leaning towards yes.
Now, will we? I guess we'll worry about it later. What happens if you don't get enough responses, whether somebody goes door to door, or whether we just? So do we have anything, uh, as a commission that we should be doing, or should we just be waiting this process out?
I don't believe so. I think there may be some more discussion to have, uh, once the votes have come in. Hopefully, we receive enough to, hopefully, we get all 25 residences to respond, and it's not an issue. And then beyond that, the study or, um, initial design would be budgeted for next fiscal year. So it wouldn't start until July, so we probably wouldn't have drawings until August or so.
I noticed on the streets, uh, plan, which is later in our agenda, that you have it for 2024. I don't know, if I remember correctly.
I believe that's correct.
So you think that's probably when we would end up finally getting to construction?
For something, for as far as the speed bumps go, for something permanent, yes, because that would give us enough time to, um, have them in, do an analysis, and to see if they're effective, to see if they'd be permanent. Also, there's some utility work going on in the street, and so we definitely want the water and sewer districts to finish what they're doing before we did any significant improvements.
Are we gonna need to do any similar notices or voting for the bulb outs?
No.
No? We can just go ahead and do that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? No other, no other questions or comments on Bruce? Okay, um, I guess we'll keep it on the agenda and at least get a, get an update on where we are next. I guess we can go ahead and move on. Next is street signs. Um, you sent out kind of a summary, I think it was a summary of all the problem street signs, which there was a lot of. But I'm not sure what we should be doing with that, so why don't you go ahead and address it, Jessica?
Sure. So since the time that I put this together, I received the rest of the street sign assessments. So there are a few more, um, missing, obstructed, poor-conditioned signs. It ended up going up from 62 to 65 total, which is, you know, 16%, which isn't terrible. So now that we have all the problem issues, I can put together an RFP and have someone go address all of these signs. And so for a while, we'll have a pristine set of signs in the city, um, for a little bit anyway. But that, similar to the, um, Bruce design, this would be something that is included in the budget and then happen over the summer, likely. I, I'm, this wasn't budgeted for this year, so if there's some extra room in some other category, there's a potential we could do this work before the summer, but most likely be completed in the summer.
Now, this originated, I think, as, um, from Steve, is that right? He is very sensitive about the signs.
Yes, indeed.
And so, um, because we didn't request that we fix all these signs, although I'm not saying it's a bad idea, it's probably a good idea. This is sort of at his request.
Correct.
All right, any discussion on the signs? Everybody think it's a good idea to go ahead and fix all these, address all these?
Oh, I, I would agree, definitely. And I was also wondering, I think Joanne had made a comment about, uh, the, the, I guess, the arrangement of the signs that she was assigned to do. It didn't make sense how they were listed. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do as a commission to help Jessica, if we could put this in a format so that we can actually keep this more current and maybe make it part of what the commission does either every year or every other year, to just do a quick inventory of them so that, you know, we stay on top of it, rather than, I, I'm not sure when the last time it was done.
I haven't thought about that. I think that's a good idea. So as far as how we do that, I'll have to get back to you, but I definitely think, right, something, it could be organized in a better way to facilitate doing this on an annual basis.
Yeah, just to make it easier, um, to do it, yeah, either annually or, you know, every other year. But, um, I, I think it was a worthwhile exercise, and splitting it up amongst, like, the five of us was not very hard.
It was educational, too.
Yeah, definitely.
But are you referring to the fact that they were painfully out of order?
Yeah. I mean, mine weren't too bad, but I think Joanne had a very difficult time. And so if there was a way that they could be organized i- in a manner that just made a little bit more sense, you know, they could be like, so you could drive the street or walk the street, it would be consecutive, so you didn't have to go back and forth and back and forth.
Yeah, mine were, mine were really bad, and I did label them that way. I'm not sure how easy that would be for somebody to, you know, update on the computer, but, uh, I, I, I did try to number them so that they could be reordered correctly.
So if, if we actually went back and like, re, or I may have done that too, I don't remember, because mine weren't too bad. But, uh, you know, I would be happy to, you know, rearrange them if we had them all, you know, that, that's just an exercise in, you know, word processing or whatever. So, just an idea.
Yeah, I would agree to it. Ours were also a little haphazard. It was just back and forth, going from Winchester to Winchester to Dave's, and then coming back to Winchester. So it was kind of, uh, difficult to navigate, especially on the traffic, because, uh, and so much construction going on. So if we can club them together to make it easier for the future commissioners to just pick it up and walk the street and know where they are going, instead of going back and forth, it would make it a little easier and, uh, more beneficial for everyone to keep track of, which signs are not current and which signs need improvement, because the ones which are good right now might not be good five years down the line, and we have to keep track of everything.
Exactly. So Jessica, let us know if you need help, like, if you want us to do anything to make that easier or make that happen.
Will do.
Well, probably, I mean, we might want to do an inventory after this, uh, after our contractor goes through the list anyways, to see if we feel that it was done right. That might be a good time. Well, either Jessica can update the list or give us the raw spreadsheet and let us update it for her, or whatever, whatever's easiest.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other comments on that? Do you need anything else from us, Jessica?
I do not believe so.
Okay. All right, moving on, Highway 9 user safety. I, I, I mentioned at the last meeting that it's, that a highway, the Highway 9 project is on the Los Gatos, bike and pedestrian plan, although there's no timeline for them starting a project. I think we need to pay careful attention to when they start that, so that we can get involved. And then, um, another comment that I have is Caltrans district, um, are we in District 4 or 5, Jessica? Do you remember?
4.
4. They are starting a bicycle superhighways project. And right now, it, they're just doing a survey on what people feel about, how people feel about bicycle superhighways. But I think we can, I can send that link if Jessica doesn't already have it. Send, she probably does. What if she doesn't? I'll send it to her, and she could send that out to everybody. And then I think we need, we should monitor carefully what the district is doing with this new bicycle superhighway plan, and try to, uh, see that if we can somehow leverage it to improve Highway 9. So those are the two comments I have on Highway 9. Does anybody else have any, anything to say on Highway 9? You don't have any, know anything new would do you, Jessica?
Nothing new now.
So I've, I've, I've requested we keep it on the list, just to remind us, uh, you know, because it's so painful to deal with, so many jurisdictions, but just to keep our eye out for opportunities to do something to improve it. And, um, yeah, on my part, as I'm trying to pay attention to what Caltrans is doing and what Los Gatos is doing. There's no, any other comments on Highway 9, then, uh, we can move on. I'm flipping back and forth between sections, that's next on our agenda. New business, uh, the pavement management program status report. Do you want to go ahead and, and talk about that, Jessica?
So this report is substantially the same as what is being given to the council next week during their regular meeting. Um, it's just a quick update about what has happened in the past year with our pavement improvements. Um, in 2019, the city did an assessment of all of the streets as required by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Um, and we placed it at 69, which is right below good. It was the council's goal, and I believe 2017 or 18 to get to good. And so we are right there. Um, last year, during this discussion with the council, they decided that they wanted to go up to a 75, which is easier to stay in the good range if you're not teetering right on it. So that is our current goal. Um, in 2020, we did about 13 different streets, got some kind of pavement attention. The, we only went up one point from 69 to 70, but that's because a lot of the low-hanging fruit streets, those were really bad, that went from a very low PCI or very low pavement condition to a very high pavement condition happened in previous years. So there was less of a jump this year. Um, but still good. Um, had nothing been done, we would have gone down, you know, so every, every little bit of progress is progress. The 2021 annual pavement project is kind of up in the air because we are committed to, uh, doing some upgrades to Winchester with the town of Los Gatos. That will definitely raise our PCI, because that's our only, what's considered an arterial street in the city, and it's very wide, and it's relatively long, and the PCI is in the mid-range. And so I think that will increase our PCI quite a bit. And if there's any remaining funds, then we can look at other streets to do some pavement improvements on in 2021. And then, also, the, I included some comments on the neighborhood improvement projects. There was the Dave's Neighborhood, which includes all that we've talked about with Bruce, that is going to be designed likely this summer. And then the Lawburn Coneyada Neighborhood, which is Xena Avenue, Clara and Natalie, which have really poor road conditions. And so, and that is able to be addressed hopefully in, uh, 2022, that will bring up the PCI quite a bit as well. Lastly, I mentioned the, um, pavement management budget, budget options report, which is, um, the same, uh, analysis that they do. They go through all the streets and rate them PCI. You have to do that every other year to be eligible for certain types of funding. And so that will be happening towards the end of this year again. And so we'll have a whole new report, uh, and analysis to go over probably around this time next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, does anybody have any questions? I'll go ahead then, I have a couple. Regarding Winchester, now you, uh, when they calculate the overall PCI, I was assuming they took, uh, the length of the road into consideration, but did they also take the width somehow into consideration? Average?
Right, when they, they do it by surface area, so yes.
Okay, okay. And then, I mean, our section of, uh, Winchester, I think, is, uh, 72. And what kind of, I don't see anything close to 100. What does it go to after it's repaved?
That's a good question. Um, my guess, considering the pavement treatments that the town was considering, it'd probably be in the mid 80s.
Okay, okay. And then, also regarding Winchester, that something in the notes, you said, we, we didn't know how much money we would have left over after the Winchester project. But I thought last fall, uh, there was a fixed dollar amount that we were paying for Winchester. Did that change?
It didn't. Um, we were committed to $400,000 with the town for the entire project, um, but that was a maximum. And that was, and they got bids back recently, and they were less than what they thought they were going to be. So hopefully, there are funds left over.
Okay, okay. So that answers that question. And you have Twin, Twin Creeks listed in 2021 on that spreadsheet, but that has a pretty high PCI. I was wondering why that was.
Um, that was for maintenance reasons. Last year, the Water District, or San Jose Water, went through there and trenched the entire street. So the PCI is probably a bit lower than when it was last assessed. And, um, and over 2020, we did all of the streets going off of Twin Creek. So all of those have very high PCIs in the 90s. And so it would be to have the whole neighborhood up to the higher standard.
Water District have to pay for that, or do we pay for it?
Um, they pay our encroachment permit for it, and then they also were required to restore this trench better than it was. So that piece of street is at a higher standard than the rest of the street, but they're not required to surface the entire street.
Okay. Uh, it would have been interesting to me, in that spreadsheet, you have a column for the 2017 PCI, but also have a column for the 2019 PCI, so we could see what had changed and how. Does that make sense?
It does. I, okay, I do see what you're saying, and I can definitely create that and noted.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, uh, at some point, will you give us more detail on what you're doing in the, what we're thinking of doing in the Lawburn Coneyada area? And can you talk about that now a little bit, then? Also, it looks like some of the roads are county and some are Los Gatos. I wonder what the conditions of those are. Can you, can you? Can you, can you comment on any, on any of that?
Sure. So the PCI on those three streets, Xena and Clara and Natalie are pretty low. The drainage on there, on those pieces of street are also really bad. And so when we did the um neighborhood improvement like criteria last year, those floated up to the top of the list along with the Bruce and Vista. Since Bruce and Vista, we were undergoing the traffic calming measures and there was a lot of other issues with those pieces of streets. We went ahead and paid for the design of La Buren Canyada Neighborhood Streets to have something that was fairly straightforward, ready to go. So that has been significantly designed already. Some of those streets, the ends of them are actually in um Los Gatos and parts, and they're definitely uh properties on those streets that the property is in Monteserino, but the street is Los Gatos. So I am in talks with the town of having, how we would split those costs and then doing some general pavement upgrades to La Buren Canyada itself at the same time. And so that's all still kind of in flux because I really think they're trying to get this Winchester project out the door. But we're not really trying to build this in the next year anyway.
And you made a couple of comments about the twenty twenty PCI. But I think you said it went up one or and do you calculate that yourself or how do you, how did you calculate PCI in twenty twenty?
Uh, the Street Saver um application. So the MTC has all the cities in the Bay Area use this particular software. That's um, we're all, when they do the analysis, they put all the PCIs in and then I'm able on an annual basis to go in and say, on the street we did such and such treatment and they calculate what the new PCI should be. So when they go on this uh next year to do our update of our pavement management program analysis, it may be that those streets have a slightly different PCI than what the computer estimated.
Okay, that, that certainly makes sense. And then my last question is, uh, what, what do you think our role is with this, this pavement management program? You, you update us, um, should we be taking a more active role or is it? What, what are your thoughts on what our, and what do you think the council and the city managers' thoughts are on what our role should be, what we should be doing?
I think definitely when it comes to, when they do the budget options report, which is the one that's happening this year and that we should have the report this time next year, they give you different options of how much money you should spend to get to what PCI. And a lot, for most cities, you know, your optimum PCI, no one has the money for that. We're in a little better position where we typically have enough funds to get us to a PCI in the good range. But I think the commission, looking over that report and seeing what you all think is reasonable and the trade-offs between having a better PCI or other types of projects we can be spending the money on, because frankly, we could be building that gap closure on Highway Nine instead of spending money to do pavement maintenance, which is a trade-off and that's something I think that the um commission could definitely weigh in on.
Okay.
Where we're spending our limited on road and uh transportation funds.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for humoring me on those questions. And did anybody think of any additional questions, anything else before we move on? Okay.
Jessica, are we, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Going to get to that uh Highway Nine gap closure, like a lot, many people complain about it and they keep checking about it, that they never finish that pavement and a one block is still uh waiting to be paved, so or that sidewalk, so are we ever going to get to it?
So we had a preliminary design from when they did the rest of that project several years ago. We have paid, had a consultant working on doing an update to current standards to have something that we would consider shovel ready. So if we had money, we can do it. Right now, those plans are sitting with Caltrans. Caltrans is notorious for taking a very long time to turn things around. But it was on the budget last year for councils to consider to, um, it's about a five hundred thousand dollar project, they declined. I anticipate putting it up for the budget next year and just kind of depending on how much funds they want to spend and then also what's available. Because the, um, where we get a lot of our pavement and transportation monies from has varied a lot this year, just like everything else with COVID. So it just kind of depends on what the council wants to do. But we are going to have something, we're going to be in a place where if there's money to do it, we can move forward.
Makes sense, but it just has been a long time and then it just keeps coming and going back and forth on agenda. So I, I was just wondering, like, is it in plans for be done ever or we should just stop thinking about it?
I think when budget time comes around, I can definitely, hopefully by our, the next commission meeting, this will, Caltrans will have blessed it. If I can present it to you, and I think having some kind of um motion by the commission to encourage council to fund this project, if that's the commission, that's what the commission wants to do, would be helpful to, for me to present in the budget discussion.
Definitely, yeah. Well, in my opinion, it should be, but I guess it depends on other commission members, how they feel about it or what they have heard or how many people have asked them to be taken care of that. So maybe based on that, we can put it on the agenda.
Thank you for remembering that, Shalini. I had forgotten about it and that should have been something we discussed under Highway Nine. So I appreciate you bringing it up. And glad to know that it's, only has one more step before we have a design that we can look at. Anything else? Okay, um, then we can go ahead and move on to discussing our twenty twenty-one goals and priorities. Does anybody have any thoughts on how we should approach this conversation? I thought maybe we could start by just reviewing what we had last year and maybe commenting on how it went. I'm trying to find that page. If anybody has it handy, they can go ahead.
So it starts by, to advise the council on ways to encourage vehicle, multi-model pedestrian and bicycle safety and accessibility for the city. Am I at the right page?
Yes, yes, although I think the laundry list below that is really what we're going for.
Right, right, yeah. So the last year's priorities were pavement management program, which we just spoke about. Updates from city and regional partners, which Jessica has been doing a good job updating us from what is coming from the town of Los Gatos and Caltrans. Bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I believe this should be an ongoing agenda and priorities and goals on every commission. Winchester Complete Street Project, which we just spoke about, Highway Nine user safety, that should be ongoing in my opinion, and respond to community needs and concern, which is of course the goal of this commission anyways.
Does anybody remember what we were thinking about bicycle and pedestrian master plan?
I think they were talking about that uh creating new bicycle lanes under the new construction uh at Winchester. That, that's what it was about.
It feels like it's more um generic than that and Los Gatos, um you know, they, they came up with, which, which we helped fund. I mean, it's shared, but there is a bicycle and pedestrian master plan document that's
Right.
inches thick.
That's what I thought it was referring to.
But what were we, were we gonna try to get aspects of it implemented? Uh, or we're just trying to understand it, which I don't, I mean, I, I haven't. I, I've glanced at a few sections of it, but I haven't really looked at it in detail, I will admit. Does anybody have any thoughts on what, what we should have or should be doing with respect to that?
Yeah, I haven't looked at that uh document either, but I remember one representative coming in twenty nineteen December meeting and talking about how the town of Los Gatos and Monteserino need to join forces to increase the pedestrian safety and bicycle, more bicycle routes and things like that. After that, I don't remember us picking it up and with COVID and the meeting format changing, I believe it just got, got lost into other things and we never actually got to the original plan, what they were talking about.
You don't have any recollection, do you, Jessica, on what exactly we, our intent was?
Sorry, I don't.
Okay. Do, do we think all of these should be kept on uh our goals and priorities for next year? Do you think we should strike any of them? Probably we should get more specific with bicycle and pedestrian master plan or strike it. That's my opinion at least.
Yeah, I think, at least we should know what we are talking about before putting it here.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. So, well, we can chew on that. I, I had, does anybody have any thoughts on things that should be added?
Um, shouldn't we add beach traffic on it? Shouldn't that be one of our priorities?
Absolutely, I have that on a little list I've got here.
Yeah, I agree.
But I, I mean, I think we just got lucky last year that it wasn't an issue, but I predict uh it'll be a big issue this year.
I think so too.
So um that, that we should, I believe we should add. And Bruce is, seems like it should be there because that's going to require a fair amount of our time. So, does everyone think, think Bruce, agree Bruce should be on the list?
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. I actually think that the last two that we were talking about, you know, Bruce and the beach traffic could, could technically fall under number six, you know, respond to community needs and concerns because those have been concerns for, I think those have been voiced by a lot of people. So I don't know if it, I mean, if we want to keep them as our, you know, separate numbers or fall under there, but you know, however they're listed, I think they should both be listed.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I would prefer just to list them out specifically.
Yes, otherwise we, it will just all be clubbed together and got mixed in the list of things. So until we actually address it and find some sort of solution, they should be on the prominent list.
We should probably just put them above number six. Then number six is just like the catch-all.
Right.
Mm hmm, yeah. And I guess I'm thinking of number six as anything new that comes up in the next year. Is there anything else that people see that we should add besides those two? Do you have any thoughts, Jessica, on things we should be looking at or not?
Nothing comes to the top of my head. I will say that that Winchester Complete Streets project, they are doing the bicycle lanes and some of the improvements now, but the larger project that is the grand vision for Winchester Complete Streets has been pushed off a couple of years because their grant funding isn't going to be available for a few years. So I don't know if you want to keep that on there for a placeholder, but I don't think there'll be much to discuss about it um in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's what Los Gato, at this point, what Los Gatos does, Los Gatos is going to do. Although we should walk it and keep an eye on things, but I don't think we'll have much opportunity to have so. Are you suggesting we strike it? Specifically Complete Streets. If you want to get nitpick, the Complete Streets is what you were talking about, Jessica, that's not going to happen this year for sure. This project that's going on right now is not a Complete Streets project. So I guess we can go ahead and strike that.
No, I think that's fine.
And then um, the only other thought I have is the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We need to come up with exactly what that means if we're going to keep it on there. I mean, one thing is everybody could take a look at that document and make sure they know, have a rough idea what's there. I don't know if that's a reasonable request to ask people to do. I guess we, there's, there's electronic versions of it. Does anybody have any thoughts on this bicycle and pedestrian master plan?
If we don't have anything specific going on, I think it can be clubbed with number six because it will always be the, come under needs and concern of community. If we are not working on an active plan right now to build bicycle lanes or a pedestrian lane, pedestrian means or anything, then I don't think, I don't uh feel that we need to put it as a ongoing thing and discuss about it when we don't even know what we are discussing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to, to strike it, but at the same time, um, I might try to look at the plan and maybe pull out a few things that are super relevant to us and just go over them at one meeting, just so people, just so all the, the commission members know, um, you know, what the plan says for Monte Sereno. Does that, does that sound useful?
Yeah, that does sound.
We put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Sure, sure.
Jessica, do you have the ability, I, I, I think I've seen the link uh before, but do you have the ability to send us the link to that um, the, the document that you guys, that you're referring to? I know I looked at it a long time ago, but I
I can absolutely send that out.
Yeah, that, that might be easier if you just spoon feed it to us and then we can all take a look at it and maybe it can be an agenda item for our next meeting.
Sounds like a good idea to me. And, and then I'll try to dig into it a little deeper and then get a hold of Jessica. It is a ma- a massive document of a few pages. That seems reasonable. What do you think, Jessica?
That absolutely works for me. I think we have enough time to agendaize it for next meeting.
Okay, that is next month though, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to strike bicycle and pedestrian master plan in, but add it to next month's agenda. And uh, we're going to strike the Winchester Complete Streets project because the Complete Streets project is many years away and the interim project is completely designed. And then we're adding two new things, beach traffic and Bruce Avenue. Is everybody comfortable with that?
I think that sounds great.
Yeah, sounds great. Um, do we need to keep the street signs on this uh goals and priorities list since we just figured out what need to be done and if we like to keep a track how it is being done?
That seems like a multi-meeting project, so.
Maybe we should add it.
Yeah, I think that seems reasonable.
Just so it doesn't slip through the cracks, because I think we should organize it and just get it to a point where it can stay, keep getting updated.
Right, because if we do not discuss it or do not put it on this list, we or we might forget or whosoever the new members are, they wouldn't even know that this was something we were talking about and it needs to be reviewed at least every couple of years.
Agree.
I think that's a good suggestion. Okay, any other comments? A lot of good comments. All right, um, do you have everything you need to create a, turn that into a real list?
Yes, I do.
All right, I guess I will look at the agenda. The next thing is committee, commission reports. I think I think Jessica primarily put that on there because I asked her to. Because I, I, I started attending the Los Gatos. I forget what it's called, the street commission. I mean, they now have, have a street commission just like we do. And there's a few interesting things there that I thought I should share with everybody. But I need to figure out how to minimize this thing on my computer. So I'm really sorry that I'm not. So I'm going to try to attend that meeting every, it's a monthly meeting at 7:30 in the morning. More painful than this one. But I'm going to try to attend it and then share what I learned with this commission. So let's see what I had. The Winchester, they're calling it the quick build. The work that's going to go on Winchester this year, the final plan is in place with bike lanes. It's been approved by the Los Gatos Council. And it's going to start, the work is going to start this summer. The next thing I wanted to report was Highway nine in Masol. Everybody's noticed the Masol intersection there has been left kind of a mess. And several months ago, they finished all the work or 90% of the work. And then PG&E was supposed to hook up some electrical, which apparently they'd known about for a long time, but they decided, at that time, PG&E decided the service needed to be upgraded. And so now the project is just sitting and waiting for PG&E to upgrade the service. And then as soon as they do that, Los Gatos is going to finish. There's a bike bridge over Highway seven, bike and pedestrian bridge, excuse me, over Highway 17. Next to Awesome Hill Road, mainly going to Fisher, but it's also just a safe way to cross. They have designed bids in place that they're reviewing. And they may have finished that review right now. And the design for that bridge is going to start either this month or next month. So that thing's moving forward quite quickly. The MTC had this, this is a new item. The MTC had this crazy grant opportunity where they were looking for some projects that happened to be ready to go. And Ying from Los Gatos had the project of connecting Highway nine to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. Apparently that, that project was ready to go. And so they were able to put in a bid for money to MTC to, to do that, to, to build a connector from both sides of Highway nine to the Los Gatos Creek Trail. And so that's something that could happen in the near future. You know, they had the, they didn't get the grant yet, but they have applied for it and they seem quite optimistic. And then another thing is they're embark, Los Gatos is embarking on a big parking study. It sounds like it's going to be a multi-year thing, but what they're doing right now to start is they're talking to all the businesses and finding out where their employees want to park, how they want to park, how far they're willing to walk to their work from where they park. They, they want, they, they want to get rid of this thing where, where people are moving their cars several times a day because they're in limited parking areas. They want to stop that. So the first part of their parking study is to take care of employees. That's everything I have from Los Gatos. A couple of minor things from the VTA is this Caltrans Bike Highway Study, which I mentioned earlier, that we'll send out a link so that people can comment on that if they want. And then the VTA is going to build a cross-county bicycle superhighway that's going to go from East San Jose by the new Bart Station, by Deirdre Station and then to at least Sunnyvale and eventually all the way to Palo Alto. And they're looking at three different options for that. One of them is a bike path along the Caltrains right away. One of them is along El Camino Real, Alameda, El Camino Real. And they would do street, they would do signal timing that was good for bicyclists so that bicycles could travel that very fast. And then they had another route that was just on city streets. And so that's something that you can weigh in on if you're interested in. But it'll, it'll be an interesting when they, when they get it done. But right now, it's just in the early planning phase and they're trying to find out which route they want to implement it on. That's everything I had. Don't know if this is useful information or not, so you can let me know if I shouldn't waste your time or if you found this useful, please let me know. Any feedback?
Thank you. No, I think that's great.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it was pretty useful. At least we get to know what is happening in the neighboring town. And that will eventually, of course, impact what we are doing here, one way or another. So thank you so much for getting up so early in the morning and attending that meeting at 7:30. I thought you said 7:30 PM.
Early morning meeting. Okay, does any, does Zen, do any other members have any, anything they'd like to announce or anything they'd like to say? I think this would be a good time for that. And if they do. If not, City Engineers report, it wouldn't surprise me if I stepped on Jessica's toes on a few things there. Now that I think about it, you can let me know if I did. You want to go ahead, Jessica?
Yeah, no problem. No, thank you for that summary because a lot of those things I knew, but some of them I didn't. I did not know why the Masol project had stopped, but I completely believe it's PG&E. The only additional item I have at City Engineer Report was the Winchester Quick Build. They did open bids on that, they're splitting it between two different larger projects in the city. But they had bid openings for both of those projects in the last few weeks. And so they have a rough construction schedule of doing the pedestrian improvements, which is concrete work in April and May of this year. And then starting the actual road work, which will obviously impact traffic in June and it running through about the end of August. So it's gonna, it will be impacting traffic on Winchester basically the entire summer. I don't believe they'd be working on Saturdays with beach traffic, but there, there's no guarantees. So that is just heads up.
If I can interject one more thing that it just occurred to me that a lot of people took interest in. There was a lot of people very upset about this project and the taking away a left turn lane from Lark onto Winchester. And people very concerned about big backups there. But they had a traffic consultant look at it in detail and said that it will, at most, only add a few seconds of delay on average. Okay, so I guess future agenda items. We've already got a couple of future agenda items that we talked about. Are there any other future agenda items, anything, Jessica, that we need to talk about that we're not aware of, for example?
I don't believe so. For future agenda items that weren't things on this agenda, I have the bike and pedestrian master plan. Was there anything else?
No, I guess not.
Okay, just making sure I didn't miss anything.
Something, does, does anybody else recall anything? Nope, we've got new things that are on our goals and priorities. Goals and priorities is a different, different than a standing. I guess we just need to review the goals and priorities before each meeting. Okay, so I think we're good. Any other comments? Anything else we need to talk about? If not, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight o'clock exactly. That was quite quick. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Barry. Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Bye bye.
Night.